Everybody and welcome. At this time, I will call our February Board Meeting to order. Say welcome and appreciate everyone that showed up. Mr. Dewees wasn't able to be with us here tonight, so I asked you to just remember his family in prayer, nothing major or anything like that, but I would ask you to remember his family in prayer. So at this time, I'll turn the floor over to you, Dr. Gwotny.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Board. I'd like to say good evening to everybody who's here with us in the Performing Arts Center this evening, as well as those folks that are watching us online on Rebel TV. Good evening to you as well. Our second item on the agenda after call to order is invocation. At this time, I'm going to invite Reverend Keith Knuckles up to the podium, and he's going to lead us in the invocation. If everybody would please rise.
Let's bow our heads. Precious Heavenly Father, your name is wonderful, mighty, and powerful. And God, we are thankful we can gather and call you our God. And God, as we move forward tonight and as we do the things that you have enabled us, blessed us with, we pray that we can do everything with you first, with you in mind. We ask for strength and might, for leadership. God, give protection over these precious students. May they be safe, but also may they grow healthy, and may they be just cared for in the best possible way. We will try our best to do that. And tonight, as we share this information, as we just go from point to point, that may you be strong, and may your spirit be here, and may you just be in charge of everything that's said and done. We are so, again, thankful for you and bless this system continually, as you have done so far. May we do those things that are wise and worthy and make you pleased. In Jesus' name we pray, all God's people said. Amen.
Thank you, sir. At this time, we'll ask Fannin County Sheriff's Office Deputy and also School Resource Officer Jim Burrell if he would come to the podium and lead us to the Pledge to the Flag. If you could direct your attention to the flag, which is on the left side of the stage. Deputy Burrell, good evening.
Stand, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. You may be seated. Board, if I could direct your attention to Agenda Item Number Four, which is to approve the Consent Agenda. This is two parts. The first part is, of course, to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting, and the second part is to approve posted minutes. We have two sets of minutes posted, so we'll ask Mr. Ensley to scroll down and open those up for us. And the first set is from our regular monthly meeting, which was held on January 14th. And the second set was for a special call meeting on the 21st. Thank you, Mr. Ensley. Mr. Chair, I recommend approval of the items on the Consent Agenda as presented.
Can the Chair have that motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there any discussion? Here, none? Can I vote?
Thank you, sir. Our next item on the agenda is Special Recognitions, and I'm thrilled to have with us tonight Principal Debbie DeCabelis and also a couple of guests. Good evening, gentlemen. And Ms. DeCabelis, talk to us a little bit about what we have here this evening.
All right. Good evening, Board. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you tonight. On behalf of the Fannin County High School, I'm honored to have the opportunity to recognize Coach Chad Cheatham, the 2020 Coach of the Year. Thank you, Coach Cheatham, for always going above and beyond in all that you do. Over the past few months, I've had the privilege of watching Coach Cheatham push our Rebels to do their best, be their best, and to perform at their personal best. He is amazing, and his team of coaches are simply fantastic. So at this time, I am going to ask Coach Cheatham if he would introduce his coaching staff and our senior players from the team of 2020.
Thank you, Ms. DeCabelis. Good evening, Coach.
Good evening. Thank you. Thank you very much. Those were kind words, and I don't want to get choked up, but thank you. It's an honor, and I love you. So at this time, I want to recognize our coaches as they come forward. Coach Noah O'Neal, our defensive coordinator, Adam Turner, Coach Chris Hyde, who helps with our middle school but is with us every Friday night in the press box on defense, Coach Chris Dickpin, our offensive coordinator, Ryan Holloway, who is our, we call him our Director of Football Operations, couldn't do anything without him, Coach Chuck Patterson, and Coach Alan Collis. And then I want to introduce our seniors, Chris Scott, Noah O'Neal, Jake Sands, Tahuta Hyde, McKay Turner, James Mercer, Dalton Ross, Tommy Ledford, Braden Foster, and Mason Bundy. Dr. Gwotny asked me this morning if I would say a few words, and I want to be brief. However, I do want to bring honor to this coaching staff and to this team and to this school system. But first thing I want to do is say, how about those Fannin County wrestlers and Coach Patterson and Coach Collis, who are now state champions? Guys, we are super, super proud. I want to thank Speaker of the House David Ralston for this resolution and this great honor. The Georgia House of Representatives in District Seven. I want to thank the Board of Education. Thank you very much for all that you do for us, to Dr. Gwotny and his staff for everything that he does. I want to thank our high school admin, Ms. Debbie DeCabelis, Mr. David Henson, Mr. Scott Ramsey, and she's somewhere, and Ms. Heather Collis, smack in the back. What an awesome group to work with and to be able to be a part of every single day. I want to thank this amazing coaching staff, and she touched on it just a little bit. But truly, as you can see, these men that stand before you in these black pullovers are not only great coaches, but they're men of great integrity, they're men of great spirituality, and they're men that love these children very much, these athletes, and they love Fannin County. And I think that's obvious in what has happened this year, not only in football, but in our academics and all of our athletics, in the classroom and in everything that they do. They are tremendous people, and I've told them over and over, this is not about me, this is all about them, and they're the ones that did the job. Men, I love you, and I'm proud of you. I thank you for the opportunity to lead, and you're a blessing to me. I want to thank our players, especially this senior class, and what a special group that they are. What they've accomplished and what they've sacrificed to be here this very moment and to receive this honor is simply amazing. And really and truly, it's, again, it's not about me, and it's not about this staff, but it's about these players. It's about our entire team. It's about our entire school system. It's about our entire high school, middle, and elementaries. This is about them. This is for them. This is what they have accomplished throughout their 12, 13 years of school and athletics. And I'm so proud to be able, just to be a part and to be a leader in a certain way amongst these great young men, that we have had the privilege to love, to call our own children, and to be a part of their lives. And I just hope that we have given our players and these seniors as much as they have given back to us. That is my prayer. I'm going to close with this. Dr. Martin Luther King said, "The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in moments of comfort and convenience, but where he stands at times of challenge and difficulty." Another wise man once said, "Losers see the difficulty in every opportunity. Winners see the opportunity in every difficulty." That defines this team. Not only does that define this team, that defines every athlete, every student, every teacher, every administrator, and every staff member of the Fannin County School System. You see, in a time of difficulty and stress, this team and our students and our athletes have brought us great joy and great hope. Let us know that even though we stand in the face of an epidemic, we are not finished. We have only just begun. Thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you so much, Coach. Coach Cheatham, you bring honor to this organization. Thank you for those words. You bring honor to this organization. Thank you for those words.
Thank you, sir.
That was great. Mr. Dennis, let's take a photograph. And I look forward to seeing wrestling next month. And another recognition, David Henson is an award-winning A.D. also, and we need to mention that as well. Congratulations, Mr. Henson. Give you a round of applause. Players, coaches, thanks again for coming out and being a part of our meeting this evening. We really appreciate you. Item Number Six is the School Governance Team Update. At this time, I'm going to turn the floor over to Assistant Superintendent Sarah Rigdon, who's going to give us a review of the activities of the SGTs. Good evening, Ms. Rigdon.
Good evening. It's nice to be here, Board. We had several meetings this past month with the SGT. EFES did not have a regularly scheduled January meeting, but the other teams did meet, talking about what was going on at West Fannin. We had a lot of mid-year updates at all of our schools, also at Fannin Middle School. We had two meetings in January, one that was a called meeting where Mr. Knuckles informed his SGT of his impending resignation to follow his calling, and then also their regular meeting, which took place a few weeks later. And then finally, Fannin County High School had an SGT meeting back on January 20th and the day after that. Blue Ridge Elementary had theirs, and they also spent quite a bit of time working on their school improvement goals. So SGTs are actively meeting and making a lot of great decisions for the Fannin County School System and their respective schools. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rigdon. Item Number Seven is the District Health Update. We're going to turn the floor over to Director of Applied and Integrated Instruction Lucas Roof. Good evening, Mr. Roof.
Good evening. Good evening, Board. The first thing, our numbers. We get our case numbers up there. As you can see, we've gone down over the last couple of weeks. It kind of mirrors the community. Coming back from Christmas break, we had a pretty big spike. Mr. Ensley can pull up a graph here in a second that can show that. And, you know, we had a spike there. Hang on a second. There we go. So if you'll see that spike right there, early January, our school system mimicked that, and now, as we move, you can see the downward trajectory, and that's kind of what we're seeing in the schools and the school system as well. You know, just less positive cases, less quarantines. However, we just got to continue to be smart, do the right thing, and hopefully continue to have a downward trajectory.
Thank you, Mr. Roof. He's made a couple of good points here, and you can see that there was a spike that was after the Christmas and New Year's holidays. And if you scroll back also, you'll notice another little spike there at the very first part of December, following the Thanksgiving holidays. So, you know, the times it breaks where people, you know, congregate, you can see there's a reflection in that in our county's data. This is a great graph. This is available on the Weather Channel's website, and it also gives, Mr. Ensley, if you want to click on Georgia there to see Georgia's graph, and you'll see that the state's data is very similar to Fannin County. So the state's data and Fannin County's data is similar, and of course, our school district's data is a reflection of what's going on in Fannin County. And so, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Roof? We're glad those numbers are decreasing. Thankful for that.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you, Board.
Thank you, sir. Okay, the next item on the agenda is School Happenings, Agenda Item Number Eight, and I'm going to welcome Fannin County Middle School Principal Keith Knuckles. Welcome to the podium, sir, and give us an update.
Good evening. Good evening, Board. It's good to be here. Last time we met with Fannin County Middle School, it was beginning of the year, and we had a lot of challenges we thought we would face. I want to report to you that we've taken on the challenges, and I think we've done pretty good. Some of the biggest things that we accomplished or tried to accomplish in the fall, one of the biggest things that we do each year is the REACH Signing Ceremony. We have five new students in the eighth grade. They're going to be REACH applicant students, and we're so proud of them. They reflect exactly what our goals are. Ironically, in the midst of all the pictures, and I'll introduce the names, J.C. Fane, Riley Flowers, Abby Ridings, Wyatt Payne, and Nolan Yerudia. The one that organizes this, Ms. Candy Sisson, is not in the picture, and she reminded me I cropped her out of all of them. I can't believe that. I promise you, she was there, and she was behind every scene, and for whatever purpose, we just didn't include you. Candy, you do a great job. Thank you for what you do there. So we're going to hope these students come through, and they've done great so far in eighth grade. They've got four more years to prove themselves. They're getting good mentoring. Our mentors are consistent and solid, and so we're excited about their future. Another big event we do is Veterans Day Program. Well, we're in the pandemic, and like all the schools here, we had to try to decide what we're going to do for our veterans. The idea came that instead of having the veterans come in and sit in our auditorium, which we couldn't do, why don't we meet them outside? So we put together a little package. Our teachers jumped on this and staff persons, and we decided we were going to have a parade. And I believe it was very successful. As a matter of fact, our staff had more fun with this, organizing it and participating in it, and we got to see a parade of cars and veterans showed up, and it was just a wonderful, wonderful scene. What we did with it was we lined our students all along the driveways at the middle school, and it took from the very beginning, near the baseball field, to the far end, over near the practice field and what used to be called the Goat House, and we lined students everywhere in a socially-distanced, safe environment, and we followed all the rules and regs, and it was absolutely a great thing to see. We really enjoyed it, and it was flawless. It took a lot of effort, but the effort is worth it for our veterans. Some of the things we have accomplished, taken on, and I think been successful at, is we try to focus more this year on our students, not just in their education, but in their welfare, socially, emotionally, and any way that we can find opportunities to intervene and be a part of the lives of these students. So we have a lot of incentive days this year, trying to keep morale going, and we think we have. I'll prove that later with some data. Some of the opportunities we took time to do or take part in was Country Day, Tacky Sweater Day, the Academic Focus, which we do that all the time, Rebel Spirit Day, and Decade Day. So we've got some pictures of our students, and I believe we've built a rapport with our students, especially in this tough time, to where they trust us and depend on us. We've had wonderful relationships, wonderful participation, just a good year. Another area that we're focusing with our challenge on this year, and it's part of our school improvement goals, is to try to build the emphasis and connections. Even today, at the middle school, we had a combined opportunity with the high school, where high school brought down their CTAE activities, classes, and we gave eighth graders an opportunity to go and see what's coming. Our eighth-grade Connections CTAE STEM classes got a chance to see what high school does. It was a great experience for them. It was very eye-opening for them. As a matter of fact, many of them walked, looked, and were silent, thinking, man, I've got opportunities. We try to build those classes down in the middle school. What you see up on the screen are the examples of our Connections classes or what we offer there. We have 10 teachers that can provide instruction in each of these programs, and some of them are just up and coming. We're especially proud about our computer science and our STEM programs, but each up there are equally important to us and to the students. So what we have here are some pictures of what our students do in the Connections classes, and I'll start from upper left and go around. In the STEM classes, our teacher, Ms. Ashley Jacobson, focuses, directs, allows them to plan and try to create from their head, from their mind. We use the computer science classes for building understanding, awareness, technology. We're working on robotics. We get a lot of students from the elementary schools that are fluent in any of the robotics. We try to keep that going. I really like our PE situation right now. We've got two young and very capable coaches that I'm excessively proud of. I really hope I lose them one day to the high school. They're that dynamic to the students and what they do. In the STEM class in the bottom, we even have guest speakers. In there is a good man, Paul Gribble, coming to share with the STEM classes the opportunities in entrepreneurship. And then we move all the way over into art, and our students work excessively well. They have the nine-week classes, and they accomplish a lot. We put that in the hallways of what we do. Our FFA program is very strong. We have students competing often, successfully. A couple of three students are just unbelievable in their efforts. They win ribbons. They go to competitions all over the place and not just in North Georgia. And what we see and what we're seeing in our FFA program really strongly contributes to what your efforts were when you put that building together and presented it to the community. We're very proud of what we can do inside that building, from our school and for our community. The band, I'll start this time in the bottom right and go up and counterclockwise. Our band is very aggressive in terms of wanting to get back at it. Well, that's what they do. Performers perform, and they do the best they can in this pandemic era. We do hear Mr. Weaver, our middle school band teacher, working with them, guiding them. We'd like to continue to build the numbers. Even right now, the high school and middle school are looking. Ms. DeCabelis and I are trying to wait and see, how can we get more participation from specifically the band down to the middle school? We'd like to sell the program and keep it going, just like we've had that successful band and everything else. We've had food drives, trying to get kids to participate and consider others in the times. In the upper left, this is an example of, again, the STEM opportunity, the STEM direction we're going in. Students were encouraged to create a plan to where we could use both the agriculture class and the STEM class to try to build a real, live, working garden in the back portico that shows the growth of Georgia agriculture, that shows the plants that grow, and even the products that we can use. And so we're currently trying to decide which plan is going to win. It's a good competition and a healthy competition. We're very proud of our PBIS programs and what's going on in PBIS. I want you to look at the data here. These bar graphs here, as we look at them, show the last four years of discipline referrals. Four years ago, we instituted a much more aggressive PBIS approach. We poured some money into it, and we've got a great leader, Vanessa Weaver, who is working hard with students every day. She's our graduation coach, and you can see the trend of discipline referrals four years ago to now. The plum color represents where we are right now. I can't say enough about the efforts of our students, our faculty, and how proud I am of what we've done in trying to get students focused on their education and on their welfare and trying to consider others. Our numbers prove that PBIS is working. We try to bring in that other factor in this pandemic era. Our teachers, our labor force, have been effortlessly working to try to get done the objectives that they're capable of doing. I love that faculty. I even charged you, the Board, to find somebody that'll love that faculty as much as I do. Well, we try to put incentives out with PBIS as well, and they really like that. We've created our own economy through PBIS for the staff, and we call them bonus bucks. And anytime we do something well or do something good for somebody else, we are recognized, and we're given X amount of bonus bucks, depending on what we do. So we give teachers opportunities to put their bonus bucks in, just on little bit any incentives, and I think it's done wonderful for the morale of the school. The teachers enjoy it, and we get a lot done. Our athletics has been so successful. Just a few minutes ago, you saw an example of what we've done. This was my first year here, when this senior class came through Fannin County Middle School. They were successful then, and they've carried that torch all the way through. I want to give you a pretty good prediction. This year's no different than it was five years ago. We are successful at everything we have done. If our kids continue to work, and we get good leadership, and we have all of the breaks that are needed, you're going to see more recognitions coming based on what is going on right now in Fannin County Middle School. Our spring sports have just begun. Soccer has played one game already, and we're excessively proud of the leaps that we've made from last year. We're excessively proud of that. Baseball was supposed to begin today, was their first game, and it kind of got altered by the weather. Golf is beginning, and it should open up next week, weather providing. Here are some pictures of how we finished in the winter sports. Our girls' basketball team had an exceptional season. So did the boys. As a matter of fact, we placed four of our teams into the semifinal round of the Mountain Youth League, and we didn't come away with any championships, but we've got competitive teams. Our seventh-grade boys did win second place. Our young wrestlers are up and coming. I was very pleased at the youth and the effort by Coach Paget in wrestling. Coach Daves and Coach Anderson are our basketball coaches, and they're also assisted by Coaches Hilton and Coach Simonton. So we had a good winter. We had a great fall, and we're looking to have as good or even better springtime. Our faculty and staff, here's part of those incentives that I was showing you earlier. We try to do some team building. We've had a few PL days in which we could do the team building. This is an example of you put teachers in front of computers and make them act like students and see what happens. These are three winning teams on some of the PL challenges that we had. One of the games was the Jumanji game that we encouraged our faculty to be a part of, and they got in there, and they were so excited. It was actually hilarious to watch the teachers act like the students. Man, they're cutthroat when they get a little bit older. Another couple of days, one of the days that we had here, and look to the right, upper right first, this is one of our receptionists. Can you imagine being a... Can you imagine being a parent, coming in and looking at that? It was kind of funny when we saw what she did when she came in, but we had a good time with it. Moving to the left, we, we have encouraged our local groups to participate with us. The teacher up in the upper left is another one participating in this special incentive day. That's Jody Morgan. Below, Ms. Brittany Newton on the Tacky Sweater Day. And two new employees that we have picked up since Christmas in the middle, bottom, Ms. Murphy McConnell, a parapro, and then a familiar face, Ms. Debbie Jones, is contracting with us on intervention. It has been an honor and a pleasure to first serve you, but also to be a part, to share with you what you've allowed us to do at Fannin County Middle School. We're very proud of where we are. I know what we're capable of doing. And again, thank you for the effort. God bless y'all, each one of you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Knuckles. Board, any comments?
Well, Mr. Knuckles, I certainly appreciate the efforts of our schools, or your school and all the schools, the leadership to provide as many opportunities as possible, you know, that, to make things as normal as possible for our students during this pandemic. So thank you for that. And the rest of the principals, thank you as well. Next item on the agenda is our central office update. And this is Ms. Heather Finley. The floor is yours. Technology.
Your favorite.
That's right. Well.
Good evening. This is the time, we, every three years, we develop a technology plan. And so this is the time we reflect on what we've done and where we're going. We have a very detailed 25-page plan there in assembly for you to read when you're bored, I guess. It's very detailed. The purpose of this overview tonight is just to give you a high-level overview of where we've been and where we're going. All right, let's get to this. All right, so let's talk a little bit about infrastructure, which is the backbone of our network. The past three years, we've worked on increasing that speed and the amount of data that can travel on that network. We have done a lot of upgrading and replacing of servers, switches, things of that nature. We've implemented new content filtering that allows us to filter and keep our students safe on the sites they're looking at offsite, even from home, when they're using their Chromebooks. We've done a lot of different things with security and data backups. All of this stuff is what Mr. Mathis manages on a daily basis. He keeps it maintained and up to date. And so every day when people come into work, their computer boots up and works, and that's, that's what we like. The telling, we can do all of that work, but the telling piece is when people are happy with that. And back in 2018, right before we put out our one-to-one Chromebooks, we did a survey with our faculty and staff. And they, only 51% of them felt like our wireless network in the schools was reliable. And that was due to, it was just out of date with mobile devices. And since we've replaced that and done a lot of upgrades in our own network, we just put this other survey out, and now 90% feel like our wireless network is reliable. And to me, that's success. When people are happy, that's, that's how we measure our progress. For device progress, I don't have to describe this much to you because I think you know very well what we've done in the past couple of years with our devices. Our Chromebooks are going home with our sixth through 12th graders. Second and fifth grade have Chromebooks in their classrooms. They don't take them home. And we have iPads for K-1. We are almost done replacing all of our interactive whiteboards in every classroom with large flat panels. We've done Chromebooks for teachers. We have over 145 hotspots in homes right now for, with homes that don't have access to internet. And now 23 buses have Wi-Fi on them. So we have done a really good job of getting the old technology out and just getting that core group of devices that are really useful in our system and maintaining them and replacing them as needed. Technology use. Now, this was the one thing that Dr. Guani told me I needed to really take hold of when I came into this position. And that's training. And that's just not training for teachers. It's training for everybody, from our secretaries and parapros to make them more productive. And of course, teacher training too. I've had maintenance in my office, training them when we gave them Chromebooks. We'll have the SROs there soon. So we don't just do training for teachers. If we're giving devices and things for staff to use, we want them to be able to use them. So training's a critical piece of that. And Mary Ann is my right-hand woman in that department. She thinks like the end user. And so anytime we get something new or we roll something out, she always helps me think through how we're going to support these people when we roll out these new devices to them. And over the past four years, we have really increased our use of Google across the district. And I am so proud to say that over 25% of our teachers are either Level 1 or Level 2 certified in Google, which if you're not certified, you don't know what an honor that is. But that takes an intense amount of studying and then it's a three-hour test. And many people fail it the first time. So for all, that many people, almost 60 people, to have that certification in our district is, makes me very proud, very proud. This is just some good snapshots of usage. I always say that I want our district to be producers, not just consumers in the technology, technology world. And right there in the bottom right is a snapshot of what happens in Google on a daily basis. In Fannin County alone, we create over 3,000 Google documents in a day, 434 presentations like you're looking at now. Those are students creating those things. 1,700 videos created by teachers and students this year alone. That's huge. So we're definitely moving up on that creation scale across the district. As far as involving our stakeholders, we have made a very concerted effort to expand our use of technology, not just by our students, by our families as well. Things like Parent Portal, Student Portal, so parents can check their grades. We've done things like making it easier for them to register by creating our central registration office. We just launched an online transcript portal this week, so you don't have to come in and fill out a piece of paper. We've done all of those things to make it easier for us to connect with our stakeholders in the community. And as you well know, we really do try to use social media and our website to tell our story and to brand the Fannin County School District and get that information out there to the public. So where are we going? Well, as far as the network, it is a constant, constant task that Scott works on all the time, keeping it maintained and upgraded. It's, we have a constant revolving door of things that need to be upgraded. It's once again about time to upgrade our wireless network again. And that's important because we have new devices that have different specifications. And so we need to continue to upgrade those things. I talked last month about our switch project. That's going to go on for about 18 months, where we're going to be going through all of our schools and upgrading and replacing those. As I know you've heard on the news, public schools are huge targets for cybercrime. So everything we do also has this security aspect to it. Those are conversations Scott and I have very often. We have a disaster recovery plan, but the biggest piece of that is preparedness and security. And so we are constantly working on that. A big piece of our future in infrastructure will be that training of keeping people safe. Don't click on this. Watch your emails, you know, keeping people safe inside our network. As far as devices, obviously, maintenance is key right now. We've got to keep the devices we have up and replaced in a timely manner. We want every student K through 12 to have that personal mobile device. Maybe they don't always take it home, but it's there. It's like paper and pencil. You don't sign up to use paper and pencil during the day. You don't get it for an hour a day. It's there when you need it. And that's where you get the purposeful use of technology, just not you're going to use it for the hour of the day that you have it. And so that's where, that's where we want to see our technology at, in every classroom, not just six through 12. When I went and talked to schools, the main things they talked to us about were creating innovation labs in their schools with things like robotics, 3D printers. You know, we've, we've moved on from makerspaces now. We need innovation labs, which is really cool. And they also all talked about this need to increase audio and video usage and creation in their schools. They want to enhance audio/video equipment. I don't know a whole lot about that, but I will, when I talk to you again in three years, I'm going to know a lot because we are definitely going to be working on that. We're also going to, in those multipurpose spaces in our schools, and upgrade the audio/video equipment in those, such as like the Lou at West Fannin that you just approved, more of those types of things in our, in our bigger spaces in our schools, so they have those devices there available for them. And we, I'm also working with Kristy Gerbl and the Economic Authority to look at long-term solutions for families that don't have internet at home. And that's also a priority for the state, and so we're working with them on that. As far as use, training, training, training. We will continue to do that, continue to evaluate what we have. Is it being used well? What training do we need to provide? We're going to be looking at things like digital signage. Instead of getting those hundreds of papers home to sign at the beginning of the year, how can we do that digitally and make it easier for parents to manage all of that? Something that we are super excited about right now is our single sign-on solution. Cindy and Erin are heading that up in our SIS department. And basically what that means is, in a couple of months, when you turn on a device, everything you have access to will be there and you can click straight to it. Right now, our students, especially these poor little kindergartners, have three, I mean, a lot of different passwords to remember, and they won't need to do that anymore. Everything will filter through that one system. Teachers have been asking for this for a long time. This is going to be a huge win for them, and we are very excited about that. And so this is just a little boring map of all these people in my department. That's what it looks like. But every single one of these people are so important. The technology specialists, the way they maintain and troubleshoot, the media specialists, the way they help with the instructional technology piece in the schools, to our student information specialists, to keep all that data together and make sure we're able to communicate with our stakeholders, all the way up in my office. Every piece of this puzzle can't work without the other piece. We all work together and I wasn't going to like get, you know, choked up, but I'm not going to do that because I can't. But these people are amazing. I don't know how many of these people you know, but every single one of them love their job and come in every day and do 110%, period. And I am so lucky to work with every single one of them. So I'm going to end with a quote that I firmly believe in. I constantly hear that technology is replacing teachers, and that is the furthest thing from the truth. Technology does not replace great teachers. Technology in the hands of great teachers is transformational. And I believe that, and I believe that's why we provide devices and why we provide the training on how to use them. That's it.
Great job, Ms. Finley.
Did I do it in 10 minutes? I tried really hard.
Board, do you have any comments or questions for Ms. Finley?
One quick question.
Yes, sir.
How often do you back your system up?
Um, oh, that's, some things are nightly, and we have a virtual backup that's instantaneous on our critical processes.
Great.
We developed that about a year and a half ago, Scott, is when we did our virtual standby. Yes.
It's a great feeling for me to be sitting here. I think the board sees, I came to you a little over four years ago and said, I had the, I had the honor of appointing my successor and I'm so proud of you, Heather. You, you have definitely taken technology right where it needed to go and taken it to the next level.
Thank you. I think you had more faith in me than I had in myself, but that was probably needed at the time.
The look on your face, you thought I was kidding, but.
I did, I thought he was kidding. It was a joke. And here I am.
You have, I, I, I'm so proud of you. This is, the department is, is doing a great job and you, you also take good care of the people. And one of the folks that's here with us, and he's behind the camera, Rebel TV, is Network Administrator Scott Mathis is right back here, and he is right in there with Heather as well. Fine individual. And, you know, the things that, the network and the improvements that you've made with the network, things that have allowed it to just really take performance and service to the next level. Just think about our COVID initiative and the dependence on technology for that. Mr. Mathis back here is running Rebel TV. That's been especially handy during the pandemic. You know, there's a lot of folks that can't get out to see events or they're unable to go somewhere because of fear of COVID. But the more events that we're able to utilize our technology and our network and our kids and our, also our adults that help out with Rebel TV, able to just try again to make things as normal as possible as we can for the community during a pandemic. None of it would be possible without a strong network, and a strong network is not possible without strong leadership. Well done.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you, Ms. Finley. All right, next up on the agenda, number 10, is public comment. I'm going to ask Mr. Danner, do we have any public comment this evening, sir?
Yes, sir, we have one, Mr. Keith Ledford.
Okay, where is Mr. Ledford? Okay, Mr. Ledford, if you'll come to the front. Mr. Danner, did Mr. Ledford get a copy of the public comment guidelines? Have you reviewed the guidelines? Thank you, sir. Oh, good evening, welcome to the podium. Yes, you may, at the podium. And public participation is limited to five minutes, so we're going to ask Mr. Ensley if he'll start a timer. The floor is yours.
All right. Forgive me if my voice is a little scratchy. We were at, I got back at 3:30 this morning from Macon and, and our, our boys did really good in wrestling, which was, which was an unbelievable event to be a part of, right? But, but I really wanted to come in here and talk because, because I'm, I'm the president of the Booster Club for the wrestling team, right? And, and I'm really excited about where we've come from. As a matter of fact, I just read some questions that were actually asked back on February the 8th of 2018 about where our athletic program is and how it's, and how it's viewed and how if we actually think that it's successful and what it is. And used to, I heard words like mediocre and some of those things in our athletics, which really irritated me, right? And so, but the thing is, is that if we look today and we look at all these young men that just walked up here, it's like on Monday, on my way down to, to Macon, I stopped and I had dinner with a friend of mine that played college football with me. He told me he just could not wait to try to get to Blue Ridge to look at the stars, right? Because you don't get to see them in Atlanta. And after last night on my way home, I really got to looking at the skyline coming back to Atlanta. Really got to thinking about it when we came back in. And what I thought was, was it was really interesting and hearing exactly how he put it, because the stars aren't really the stars that are in the sky. It's our kids, and it's exactly the people that we have in our community that are so impactful about, that shine and that are so bright about what's going on. And I wanted to come ask because last Friday, we went over to Banks County. We went into Banks County. We had our, we had our area, our area individuals there. We went into a facility that was called the Leopard Den 2.0, which was a multi-use facility that had a wrestling room in the back, had a volleyball court out to the side, so that they could have baseball, they could have wrestling, they could have football practice if they needed to when it was raining. And I don't know how many of y'all have actually been down here and seen in this, in this little gym, that's our old gym. But if you go in there and you see how the jockeying actually has to happen when it rains and there is football and there is, and there is football, there is wrestling, and there is baseball going on at the same time. It's like a big circus right around those tents, the way all that goes on. And then you take into consideration that, that the wrestling program also has to pull those mats up every single day as soon as they get done, as soon as they get done wrestling. And the thing is, is, you know, going back to the mediocre thing, we look at exactly what, what actually we deal with and, and you know, we wanted to find success, right? And I wish McKay would have stayed, right? Because McKay is the epitome of success that we have in this school, right? I mean, it's somebody who really shines brightly, who's accepted to the Air Force Academy, right? But the thing is, it's not always pretty, right? Because if you look at McKay and you really look at him in the face once he gets done wrestling, he actually leaves every single thing he has on the mat until he actually falls. And when he gets up, his eyes are black, his face is bloody, he's got stretch marks where it looks like he's been through a battle because that's exactly what he's been through. And he fought all the way back, all the way back yesterday in order to come into third, right? That was a hard, hard trek. And he ended up beating the kid who beat him that took him out of the first and second part, right? And the thing is, is when we look at our football players and we look at exactly who all those boys are, and we look at exactly what the foundation that they have laid for our athletic program and now where we're at and where we can go from here, that is not mediocre. That is now successful. And that is a foundation for us to build upon so that we can build things. Now we need a bricklayers. We need to build something that we can get everybody into. And I just ask where we are on our multi-use facility. Because we have all these people we cram into this, into the little space down here and we need, and I mean, we looked at Banks County. We went to Robbinsville, looked at theirs. Theirs wasn't that much. It wasn't that bad, but it was nice. It works. And it's like he told me, he said, we even have a computer lab. Because that way, when the boys get done with practice, they can actually go in there and get on the computers and we can get everything done. Because they don't take home their Chromebooks. And I mean, and I think, and the thing that I question is, is as our, as our sports as our, as our sports program has gone from, and I'll be done in just one second.
We thank you, and that's the end of public comment. We appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to Agenda Item Number 11, which is Energy Update. And we're going to welcome Mr. Danner to the podium. And I think you're going to introduce Mr. Spurling.
Absolutely, it's been quite some time since we've done an energy update. And Mike, Mike knows this left and right, ins and outs, so I'm just going to get out of his way and let him, let him do his thing there. But introduce Mike Spurling, lead maintenance.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Danner. Good evening, Mr. Spurling.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here, and it's good to see everyone. Been a while since I gave a report on our energy. And normally, all I do is give you numbers. And I load you down with numbers, but this time I thought I'd do a little something different. It's come to my attention that most people have no idea what we do in the energy program. So I thought I might show you all just a few things tonight. Several things are involved in controlling and holding down the cost of energy in our system. This program started off several years ago on a small scale. One building at a time as a trial. And this was when EyeView System was brought onboard as our control system coupled with energy cap. Next. This right here is a schematic drawing of one of our schools. This is a control system for all the HVAC units. It shows all the parts that control it. From air sensors, premier links, outside temperature sensors, main controllers that make up this whole system and holds the energy costs down. Next. This is a drawing of East Fannin School. This is what we see when we bring these schools up on our computer. As you can see, we've got room numbers, temperatures of those rooms. And that is a good example right there of, your color coding means something to us in temperatures. And when we, when we go to a room, we just click on, say, a room right there. And it brings up this image. And that is showing us the unit itself. And if you'll notice, we can tell the temperature, the outgoing temperature of the air, whether the fan is running, the compressor is up. This is a wonderful, wonderful system to diagnose our equipment. Before moving on, let me give you a glimpse into how our control system works. This system has a special function called load shed. We deal with peak power demand in commercial power. When this peak is set, and when usage goes over the demand, energy becomes very expensive. The EyeView monitors this and will start to relax units in the system. Other words, it will start shutting units down as needed and as many as needed. Then the EyeView will bring the units back up at a lower or a higher set point to keep from going over the demand. This is where our real savings comes in, is it keeps from peaking this power. Here's one neat feature of this control system. As you can see, we have a direct line to all the freezers, coolers in the school system. Monitoring temperatures. We have recently added a call-out system that alerts our staff if trouble arises, day or night. This saves thousands of dollars in food loss. We've also coupled several things as far as holding down energy. This, this, we use motion detector switches that cuts the lights on and off as people leave the room. Also, automatic flush valves. These flush valves use less water than a normal flush valve. Automatic faucets that turn off as soon as your hands leave. And here's one, one, one thing that most people don't realize. This is makeup air systems on our kitchens. You have the supply and exhaust. But our units are heated, like in cold weather. The air is heated before it's brought into the building. And that saves a tremendous amount of money because you're not having to redo that air when it gets inside the building. And as you can see, right there is the heater inside that unit. And one thing I'd like to share with you is the LED light system that we've, the project that we have just finished has been a total success. We have, at this time, and it was just finished this year, at this time, we've had a 4.8 savings in power consumption with those lights. And that is half of what our old bulbs was doing. In closing, I'd like to share with you that this system has saved $6,970,821 since its inception. And I look forward to progressing with this system and bringing even more savings to Fannin County.
Thank you so much, Mr. Spurling. Board, do you have any questions for Mr. Spurling?
Only thing I got to say, only thing I got to say is I wished we'd started earlier.
Well, I want to thank you, Mr. Spurling, for your work to save us energy because that dollar amount that you saw up there, that would, that would be completely local funds, which would be generated by the tax, the tax base of our property is what would generate those funds. And so you're saving our property owners money with your efforts. Well, thank you, sir. You do a great job, and he is, he is all over the district, monitoring this progress and making those adjustments. Thank you so much. Mr. Danner? Item number 12 is Facilities Update.
Go ahead, facilities, Robert. Yeah, we've a couple pictures here. This is the, the water issues we had at the high school. It happened on a Tuesday, I think it was, had a room absolutely flooded. And an old water line back when E-haul was added, go ahead, Robert. When E-haul was added, it's supposed to have been abandoned, which was not. So over, you know, 30 something years there, had to redo the water line. So Mike come up, Spurling, come up with a way to temporarily get water back to three sets of batteries. It goes all the way up there, it's that E-haul in the commons area, goes all the way up to the cafeteria there, cuts into the right. Had that done over a weekend. Mike had some contacts with some contractors, Polk County Plumbing, the best in the business. So that Monday, had the toilet batteries back up and running. The staff bathrooms on, between the chemistry and the science room, actually got put back online today. Maintenance partner got that back online, so I know that made the high school happy. Couple other pictures there, this is at the Ag Facility. You know, we've got some critter problems, so we're having even difficulty catching the critters. So we're going to take away their food source. So we're in the process, actually, it'll be completed hopefully by Friday, getting that creek bank cleaned up. So if the critters do not have the equipment to build a dam, they will move on. So if you go by there, take a look at it, all the brush and everything in the creek bank has been cleaned up, so now we've just got to do some more leveling off. And that's going to help us out tremendously to get that field dry. Hopefully, wants them for all to do some things in the future. So next time you by the Ag Center, take a look there, it's absolutely beautiful. This is just a follow-up, our access control, our SALT-O that we've had in the system now for about five years, I know you love numbers. This is from July the 1st until December the 31st. A key card has had, has had to been used to unlock a door 221,291 times. So again, it's broken down by school, by month. So again, that is, you know, those are locked doors. You know, that includes students, staff, that sort of thing. So again, we will continue to add doors as necessary. But again, I think this has been a major improvement to our facilities. You know, it was very skeptical when we, when we begun. You know, people said, you know, we don't like this thing, and now, hey, can we get the, we get SALT-O here, here, here.
Well, I'll give you the credit because five years ago, you, you were at the high school, and you actually asked for this. And I know you worked closely with technology, especially Mr. Mathis back there to...
Well, actually, I got a phone call from Danny Schimpf. He said, hey, I need you to come to the tech center. I said, okay. So I came out, and they presented this, and they said, you want to try it? And I said, yeah, let's give it a try. And it has been a huge success, not only just for convenience, but also for safety.
Word spread of the success at the high school with that. And so you can see the rest of the schools have it now. And the beautiful thing about this, in addition to just safety and security, the doors are, more doors are locked more often. But you can audit any one of those numbers and tell what key, what time, what door.
Absolutely. The student keys, you know, here at the high school, the students do have keys. We just modified it per admin request. They now have access from 7:45 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. At 4:30 in one second, their key will not let them in the door. And it's actually pretty comical, looking at that audit trail, the kids before 7:45. I mean, they'll just zap that thing, just, you'll see that certain, I'm going to pick on my nephew, Tommy Ledford, he'll come in at 7:45, and he, or 7:35, he'll hit that thing about 20 times. And at 7:45, the name goes away because it's on a different place in that audit trail. So it is very secure. Snow days, you go in and you click pretty much one button, and that keeps the doors locked. That's at every school. The custodians do not have to go dog things down. So again, it's all electronic now, so again, it's been a huge success.
Plus, we have a relationship with our public safety, fire, and law enforcement, and we've been able to provide them with the electronic key cards as well and welcome them into our buildings.
Yeah, every SRO, actually, every sheriff's deputy with Fannin County has one. Every Blue Ridge police officer has a key, a 24/7 access. You know, we want them in our buildings. And we told them, you know, hey, if you're out on the road at 2 o'clock in the morning and you're by school, go in and warm up, go to the bathroom, and, and you know, walk through the schools. And actually, they're taking us up on it. So it actually shows up on an audit trail. So again, very, very huge success.
Yeah. Any questions for Mr. Danner on that? Okay, thank you, Mr. Danner. The next item is yours as well, Construction Update.
Construction update, again, some pictures. They have started cutting trees at the property for our Transportation and State Development Center. Again, I went by there today, and you can really tell now where the old facility, where the old Tocco property was, it is, it is opening up. And it's actually going to be a beautiful place. And just some more pictures there. They are logging currently. They just got the actual permit to start moving dirt. They've been waiting on it, so the silk fence will be going in. If rain holds off, hopefully by Friday. So we actually might start some, some dirt moving here very soon. Then last Thursday, we had our, our groundbreaking. So again, our renderings are there over on the stage. Just a few pictures of our groundbreaking. So again, look very forward to some movement out there as well.
That was a great day, one week ago today. And, you know, so we approved that since the last meeting. We've had our groundbreaking, and it's full speed ahead. Board, do you have any questions about this agenda? Okay, Mr. Danner, number 14, approved advertised for bids, CTA HVAC renovation and modification.
Oh, I'm sorry, go back to that real quick. This is in, in response to Mr. DeWes, the last board meeting, he asked me how much property was left over. So again, this is an estimate on how much property is not going to be used of the 36 and a half there in red. I didn't include the buffer for the creek bank there because it's really unusable.
It's restricted.
But again, you know, it's roughly, you know, just under 10 acres there.
Good follow-up, Mr. Danner. All right, 14.
This is a request to go ahead and, and put our CTA HVAC renovations out to bid. Back in June, we got an approval from the Georgia DOE to use COPS money. Remember, that was $112,000. Robert, if you'll open up that other one very quickly, the other attachment. Scroll down to the very last page there, Robert. So again, you've already approved the application. So again, we're actually ready to put this out for bid, to hopefully get started this summer. Go up two more, Robert. So we are eligible to receive, down to the bottom, right there. We're eligible to receive $112,000, a little bit more, Robert, back there. We're eligible to receive $112,000 from the state of roughly probably $180,000 project. So again, we're going to put that out to bid, hopefully as early as, probably say Monday, I would say tomorrow. But, and then once we put that out to bid, I'll come back to you next month, hopefully with an awarded bid, and then we'll get that started as soon as school is over this school year.
Okay, Mr. Inslee, if you'll take us back to the memo then. So let's look specifically what we're asking to approve here. And this is, we're asking for permission to, to begin the process to advertise. And so, and you're going to utilize the capital outlay planning system or what Mr. Danner calls the COPS funding.
That is correct, that is correct.
And then also, it looks like some SPOS funds if there's anything not covered by COPS. This is a great use of state money. And it's, it's, there's a lot of logistics involved in this and the planning piece, and Mr. Danner's completed all that, as you saw in the application when you approved it. So I have no problem making this recommendation, Mr. Chair, to approve as presented.
Okay, I'd like to make that motion that we approve the advertisement for bids.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Board. And we'll be coming back to you very soon about more updates at the middle school, high school, elementary schools, about renovating their, or modifying their HVAC, again, using COPS money. So that'll be coming very soon.
All right, thank you. Next item, number 15, is yours as well. Let's go ahead and begin with the custodial memo there. Go ahead.
Yes, sir, we've, we had some substantial amount of CARES Act money received by the state. So we got together, you know, watched some big-ticket items we could get to help the schools out. So received a quote from Roman Chemical. It was a low quote of $8,500 per machine. This is the floor machines that every school has that custodians use. Typically, there's one at every school. So what I'm going to ask, what we're planning on doing is put at least one more in each school, possibly more in others. So like here at the high school, we've got, you know, seven buildings, and they have to move one machine to one building to the other. And those things are pretty fragile. So prefer to not move machines back from one to the other. So again, a minimum of one at each building location, the ones that they have now are still going to be used. So again, we can have two custodians doing, you know, one custodian doing one hall, one doing the other. So it's actually going to help speed up the process as well.
What about the Ag Center? I guess you'd take one to the Ag Center from one of the...
I'm sure Buck Rogers is our custodian that does the Ag Center now. And I'm going to, he'll probably kiss me right in the mouth if he knows that he's going to get a machine over there because it's, it's just a, it's a mop bucket. So I'm going to stay away from Buck for a while if y'all approve this tonight. And, but I'm sure, you know, Ag Facility does not have that. So, so you know, and it's clean, I know y'all have been to the Ag Center, it's clean as it is down inside, that's done with a, with a mop. So again, this is going to definitely help out tremendously.
And that action's not perfection as much as it is to just minimize the wear and tear on the machine as it's transported between facilities.
Absolutely.
This makes sense. And so, and you've exceeded the 50,000, so in policy, DJED, you've done comparative shopping on these items?
That is correct. We did receive three quotes, and this by far, the other, the closest bid to that was 8,900, I think, 8,800 per machine, this is 8,500 per machine. So again, this is CARES Act money, this is actually not Fannin County money.
Yeah, this is, this is the CARES Act, which part of that is, it's in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. And this is something... to the COVID-19 pandemic, and this is something that's well in line, and I'll look at Ms. Rigdon, when I say this, well in line with the intended use of those funds, is to increase your ability to keep your buildings clean, and with the disinfection process, so this goes right along too with, with part of that, so, Mr. Chair, I recommend that we make this approval as presented.
Can the Chair have that motion?
You have that motion.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Okay, thank you. Our next item on the agenda is the prom and graduation dates, so, Mr. Danner, you want to tell us a little bit about that, and I think we got Ms. Decavellis coming up to help you?
Yeah, I'm just gonna turn the floor over to Ms. Decavellis, and she can give you some more information.
Okay, thank you, sir. Good evening, ma'am.
We are, of course, in the planning stages for the prom, and we wanted to bring that date to you. We are looking at holding the prom at Anola, we are looking at April the 17th, we would like to offer it from 7 to 11 p.m. We understand that this may or may not get to happen, but it can't happen if we don't plan.
Exactly.
So we are trying to move forward, we have the location secured, we have plans in place, we are at this point in compliance with the current governor's order. It would be held in the outside tent so that we could keep the sides up as appropriate, students would have to wear a mask, we're looking at a masquerade-type prom, trying to make it cool to wear the mask, but we believe that this would be in the best interest of our students, as we would have seniors, if not allowed to hold the prom, who would not have had the opportunity to attend a junior, senior prom. So it is our hope that we would be able to do that. We're also bringing to you our proposed graduation date of Friday, May the 21st. We would, of course, hope that we could do a traditional graduation, but we also understand that we would have to be in compliance with whatever governor's order is in compliance at that time. So at this time, we are asking that you consider that date, we would like it to be at 8 p.m. We are also fully prepared to do the same as last year, if needed. As an administrative team, we want to make sure that we offer that opportunity to all of our graduates.
Thank you, Ms. Decavellis. Board, do you have any questions about either of these events? Okay, the prom information is presented, just that information, but the graduation, we're going to ask for board approval, so, Mr. Chair, can we approve the graduation plan as presented?
Can the Chair have a motion to approve the graduation plan?
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Decavellis. Next item on the agenda, 17, is to approve the school calendar for 2122, the next school year, it's already time to think about that, and you've had a committee meeting, and you've had feedback from folks, and there's been some voting on this, tell us about it, Mr. Danner.
Yes, sir, just like every year, we do have a calendar committee made up of school administrators, typically either APs or principals, also SGT members, and we requested this year that SGT members be the parent, parent portion of the SGT, so we've got a parental people that's on the committee, we've got some school level as well, myself, Mr. Inslee, and Ms. Sisson, so we come up with two options, go ahead, Mr. Inslee, and of course, both options have a 90-day semester, first and second semester, that's option one. The green is professional learning days for teachers, the orange is holidays for students and teachers, so again, that was option one. A big push was for a week of Thanksgiving, which we put a week of Thanksgiving on both calendars, and then also, the big push in option one, there was a, every school wanted a week, a full week break there in the first semester, so option one did have that, so again, it did meet the 180 instructional days, 190 for staff. An email was sent out on a Monday, so we give the staff, actually, I won't say staff, Fannin County School System employees, an option to vote for this either online or through paper copy, and whichever one you want to go there, Robert, go ahead and do the selection, yeah, the choices there. So using only 54% of our roughly 400 employees actually participated in it, the total number of votes, including the paper copy, is in red, so 170 people out of 250 voted for option one, and 80 voted for option two, which is a 68% voted for option one, 32% voted for option two.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Danner on this? Let's go back to the memo, Ms. Inslee.
Was there a mention in there that they might be taken away if you have to miss some days?
That's always, anytime that we put the calendar out, any holiday could be taken back for instructional days if, for inclement weather of some sort, but yeah, that's always, that's a given, that is a given.
That's a good question, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, so let's go back then, and I recommend that we approve the calendar as presented, the winning calendar as presented, Mr. Chair.
Can the Chair have a motion to approve the calendar?
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Okay, thank you. Mr. Danner, thank you.
Am I finished?
Yeah, you've been up there a while, yeah, you've earned a break. Well, good evening, Ms. Winn.
Good evening.
And item number 18 is to approve school quarterly, so let's go ahead and open that up, Ms. Inslee, you've got it prepared, so let's go ahead and scroll through, and, Ms. Winn, if you have any commentary on any of this?
We have Blue Ridge Elementary, and then East Fannin, this is July the 1st through December the 31st for all of our schools, and then we have West Fannin Elementary School, and all of our schools are in excellent financial positions, we have the middle school, and then we have the high school, and then last, we'll have CTA, but every school has been audited halfway through, they are in excellent position, and very well.
Okay, thank you. These, these reports are put together and presented to you per state law on a quarterly basis, and Ms. Winn's been through them, I've been through them, and as she said, they've been audited and make the recommendation to approve as presented.
Can the Chair have a motion to approve school quarterly reports?
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you. Item number 19 is also, Ms. Winn's, it's our district financial report, let's go ahead and open that attachment, Mr. Inslee and Ms. Winn.
This is our financial statement for our general fund for December 31st, 2020, we are 50% complete of our fiscal year, our local revenue is at 57.37% versus 66.22% from the prior year, our total revenues were at 54.27% versus 58.93% from the prior year, and our total expenditures are at 44.26% versus 46.92% from the prior year, and we're in excellent financial position.
Yeah, so we can see the local revenues are starting to show up and come in on this report right here, and so-
Tax, tax revenue starts coming in, and then a lot of it comes in the next month as well.
This is certainly a healthy financial report, we're thankful that, and I recommend approval, Mr. Chair.
Chair seeking a motion to approve the financial report.
Motion to approve.
I'll second it. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Okay, thank you. Our next item on the agenda is an update for SPOST, and, Ms. Winn?
Our SPOST collections for, that we received for our December was $715,081.45, that is growth of 25.4% from the prior year, so we are over our collections, but we will continue another three months to collect on this SPOST.
Yeah, so what you mean by that is that, that this is still going into the SPOST 4 account?
SPOST 4, and we'll have three more months.
And that is per the state has given us that guidance?
Department of Revenue.
Yes, so this is SPOST 4, and, you know, we've hit our cap financially, and so, but the state determines that cutoff, so this is additional collection that will just build the SPOST 4. Remember that the projects that we approved at the special call meeting, we've already started, are being funded under SPOST 4, and then, once, you know, we'll pay as we go on those projects, with that guaranteed maximum price that we approved last month, that will all be paid for, we anticipate, out of SPOST 4 funding, all the while, beginning, Winn, Ms. Winn, April 1st-ish?
April 1st will be the first month that will be SPOST 5, that we'll receive that first collection in May.
So as we build the projects in SPOST 4 funds, utilizing SPOST 4 funds, we begin saving in SPOST 5, beginning in April, and by the time that we finish these projects under 4, we'll have a nice, healthy balance that we can begin building on those SPOST 5 items that were on the referendum that we put before the public and board-approved, items such as classrooms at the middle school, also the health and wellness athletic facility that was on the referendum as well, that's a SPOST 5 project, and so we'll have, we'll have cash on hand, we can begin looking at those projects right away after we finish building, so, that's greatly, great management, also, it's a great blessing that Fannin County has the economic engine that it has to produce that, and if you'll notice, this is another record-breaking month, but just a few dollars, but we did, we did break the October collection, again, over $700,000, thankful for this. Ms. Winn, did I miss anything?
That is, and it's just amazing to look from, because you can see the prior year columns, those were all $500,000, and this year, we've got $600,000, $700,000, and that's, you know, not counting that catch-up, but those are quite a lot of growth for a pandemic.
So this momentum, this financial saving and planning ahead is how we're able to do these projects debt-free, no bonds, no debt, pay as we go, and thankful for that, so. Board, have any questions or comments for Ms. Winn? No approvals needed on this, sir?
I would just simply say that this, our blessed situation is not the norm, it is the exception.
I agree.
You can talk to systems statewide, and they're so envious of our financial position, and our ability to operate debt-free, and our ability to grow in the fashion that we're growing, staging our projects, so that we pay as we go, and no debt. In fact, I've had a few offers to move to their county, so, I'm not planning to do that, but truly exceptional situation, we're blessed.
I was speaking to a school leader last week, that their district needed to pass a SPOST to continue to pay bonds, and, you know, I'm just thankful we're not in that situation, so. Ms. Winn, thank you so much. Any other questions for her before we move on? Okay, the budget calendar, Ms. Winn, 21.
Yes, this is our budget calendar, so we can start, we're starting to plan and work on our budget for 2022, so from February through May, we'll be looking at our different goals, priorities, looking at employee compensation, looking at different staff, our local projection revenues, state, federal, and, and what the assembly, you know, puts forth through their sessions, and then in June, we'll present a tentative budget, and we can decide if we want to try to approve that budget in June, or really wait until upon receipt of the tax digest, which is what we normally do, and I think that's very, works very well for us to see what that is, so we'll then be adopting that budget either in June or upon receipt of our tax digest when we adopt that.
I think this is a reasonable calendar, and the timeline is, it's, it's good, and it's also wonderful to be planning FY22 with the financial status and the financial health that we're in, and FY21 currently, again, that's not the norm, as Mr. Bramble had mentioned for other districts, you know, in this particular fund, that's not the norm either, and we're thankful for that. This item does require board approval, so, Mr. Chair, I recommend approval as presented.
Can the Chair have approval for the FY22 budget calendar?
So moved.
I'll second it. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you. Well done, Ms. Winn. Okay, item number 22 is Ms. Miller, we're going to welcome you up to the podium, Ms. Miller, and you're going to present a request for purchase, tell us about it.
Hey, I'd like to present, request to purchase a 24-passenger special needs bus to be used at the Fannin County High School. Under policy DJED, we need board approval because the amount is $105,180 for this purchase. It is exempt from the bid process though, because the quote reflects the cost of the state contract pricing, and it will be used primarily to assist in transporting special needs students at the high school, and one of my visions in working with Mr. Foster too, is he does a lot of transport now for our kids, doing their internships, going to the Ag Center, going out to places that, like, we had a young lady that needed to finish an internship in order to be a pathway completer, that couldn't get her driver's license, so he transported there, so I'm very excited about that, I can see visions of working with Mr. Ruth and doing like Ag transport and those kind of things, so it'll be easier for all of our students. So this, the funds to purchase this bus will be from the QB account number, and if you'll see the fourth number in that, account number is 2081, and that is set aside for special education needs for non-instructional purposes for the state of Georgia. Denver's up here with me, because if there's any questions about any of the specifications on the bus, other than it has 24 seats, and that it's handicap accessible, I will default to his wisdom.
All right, so this purchase meets the needs of your department, but it also benefits transportation, so, and I'm thinking that you, you're good with the specs of this bus, Mr. Foster?
Absolutely, we, I actually got the clothing all prepared for her, so yes, this is, this will fit right in with our current special needs buses, basically the same thing we're operating already, so.
Thank you, sir. Board, any questions?
One quick one. What is a fog maker?
A fog maker, that is, Georgia State School Bus specification says that any special needs transportation must have a fire suppression device under the hood of the bus, in the case of the event of a fire, this is designed to extinguish the fire, or at least calm it down enough to get the students evacuated, realizing that you're transporting students with disabilities as quickly as a fire can, can overcome a bus, this is designed to extinguish it safely so that we can move forward and get the children off the bus.
Because sometimes that takes longer, and they need assistance, and so, you know, every minute that we can, or second that we can-
Absolutely, I might have named it with a better descriptor than fog maker, but thank you for that.
Well, actually, and I'll elaborate just a little bit, the fog maker is a relatively new system, it is a water-based system. Prior buses that we have have a powered base, and one of those actually, we have one of those accidentally discharged because the wiring had rubbed through, it makes a huge mess, we have to have the bus towed, and it's a, you really can't start the engine, and you get it totally cleaned up, because it's powder, it's like sand, it will enter the engine and do damage. This device, basically, when it goes off, you just walk it off and roll on, in the event that something like that happens. It's much safer, it's much more environmentally friendly, and it actually acts as not only a fire suppression agent, but a cooling agent as well, so.
Very good, thank you.
I'd like to also publicly thank Mr. Foster and his department for all that they do for our children across the department, but he two-steps quite a bit to make sure our kids get what they need, so thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, Ms. Miller. Mr. Chair, I recommend approval as presented.
Can the Chair have that motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Our next item, number 23, is to approve an intergovernmental agreement with the Fannin County Recreation Department, this actually involves a couple of our departments, it involves nutrition, it also involves transportation. We have with us the Board of Education Attorney, who is also the county government attorney, who has assisted with the preparation of this document, Ms. Doss, do you have any comments on this document? She gives a thumbs up back there.
If you have a decision, I'll, um, if you deny, I have a decision for being our legislature, because thank you, this is a flash, you guys, we're bringing it up, we can do that, and now, now, I'll, 20 minutes left, so thank you, this is, Barbara Smith will be pressed. He is.
Okay, so we'll scroll through, and do either of you, and you can see where this one's been executed by the county, do either of you have any comments related to this?
No, this is just the framework of the, pretty much laying out the do's and don'ts of what we do with, with the county, and who's responsible for what, when they use our school buses, or our nutrition department's equipment, so as far as we're concerned, we approve several times a year bus use requests for the Recreation Department, and this just governs that.
County government's a great partner.
Oh, absolutely.
Go ahead, Ms. Sisson.
I would like to say that this-
I would like to say that this agreement allows nutrition, transportation, and the Fannin County Recreation Department to support our students by providing meals, safe transportation, and a supervised environment during June and July. Basically, school nutrition and the Board of Education goes and applies for the food safety permit to operate in the Fannin County government facilities, is what really initiated this a couple of years ago. The government provides the facilities, school nutrition provides the, the food and supplies and labor to prepare the meals. And this is a meal program that children in the community ages 18 and under can go to the Recreation Department and get a meal during the summer months, even if they're not enrolled in the summer day camp. So it's a great program.
Yeah, it's, they're all our kids, whether they're with us or with county government, and so it's, it's helping our kids. The terms of this agreement, other than the improvement dramatically, is essentially the same as last year? Concur?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Chair, I make the recommendation to pass as presented.
Can the Chair have that motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Sisson, thank you, Mr. Foster. Item number 24 is to approve technology equipment as salvage. We'll welcome Ms. Finley back up to the podium.
Hello again. So our salvage list is very small because you'll see our surplus list on the next memo is very large since we did so well surplusing it and selling them. But the items on the salvage memo are from Blue Ridge and East, West. A middle school did not have any, they're going to sell everything they have, and some from the high school. And all of these items were not in any condition to try to sell through GovDeals. So I respectfully request your permission to salvage these items.
Mr. Chair, make that recommendation to approve the memos as presented.
Can the Chair have a motion for these salvage items?
So moved.
I'll second it. Is there any discussion?
I got one question.
Yes, sir.
Now, you're intending to sell these, is that right?
These are salvage. These are things that have, that are broken or, yeah.
They're no good.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Any, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Okay, thank you. Item number 25 is to declare property as surplus. So this is what you intend to sell?
Yes. We will do the same thing that we did back in the fall, where we will list these for auction on GovDeals. We post them on our website for two weeks, and then they go on GovDeals for, out for auction. As you know, we made over $40,000 last time, so we have even more items this time, so we're very excited about that. We have items from every school, ranging from smart boards, projectors, I have some switches at my office, iPads, laptops, desktops. We take all the hard drives out and don't even sell them with the hard drive. So it's still beyond me how much people will pay for these things, but one man's junk is another man's treasure, so.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chair, recommend to approve these items to be surplused as presented.
Can the Chair have that motion?
So moved.
I'll second. Go ahead.
Second.
Any more discussion?
I got a question.
Sure.
That money, since it's each school, is that money that they gain back from that, is it going back to that school or just goes into technology?
No, the technology money's at the district level, but I believe it's in our reg that it goes back to the local, like, the general account. So it doesn't even go back even to my budget. It goes right back in the general budget.
All right. Good question. Any other?
All those in favor?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Finley. Ms. Enslie, number 26, review of board code of ethics and conflict of interest.
Yes, sir. This is our annual review that is a part of our training that we do for our exemplary board. And I'll kind of look at policy BH, which is code of ethics for our board members. And basically, it goes through the different domains, the governance structuring, strategic planning, boards and community relationships, policy development, board meetings, personnel, financial government, conduct as a board member, conflicts of interest. And the other one is the conflict of interest, which is policy BHA. And it is also listed in there for your reference. And tonight, you were given a document that you will sign off on for the code of ethics that we will submit to GSBA. And you also had a conflict of interest that you will sign off on as well, which means that you have looked at these policies and you understand the guidelines that are set forth in those.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Enslie. Board, are there any questions about either of these? Okay, as Mr. Enslie said, this is annual. Other than the signatures, no board approval is required. Correct. Okay. And I'll just add as an aside, it's the ethics of this board. You're an amazing board, and it's an honor to serve for you and with you. Okay, we'll move on to the next. This one does require approval. Number 27, Mr. Enslie?
Yes, sir. This is our approval to go ahead and move forward with the exemplary board status. One of the things I put in there was to be able to kind of see the application process and the things that we have to include about even from the strategic planning standpoint, where Ms. Rigdon and I worked together on that, the Georgia Vision. She works very, she's done a great job of incorporating the Georgia Vision into the strategic plan, all the assessments that we do, whether it be the self-assessment that you do, the external review that we do, you know, like, two board members, two community members and myself. Also, the superintendent's evaluation is based off of the GSBA. And again, just lots of things, the training itself, that you have 12 hours. You have completed six already with our retreat, and we will hopefully be able to have a retreat pretty soon. Our accreditation through Cognia, or Advanced Ed formerly known as. This is the ethics piece, the board member ethics, and this is where I have to actually list the link to the website where that we have the code of ethics listed out, fiscal responsibility, where we approve the district budget counter, which is something we did tonight, and just lots of other things that are on here, the expectations, rationales. But you guys are a phenomenal board that, that does these things every year to be an exemplary board, and I, I'm just thankful for, for what you do and thankful that you're willing to go the extra mile to, to do that.
Ms. Enslie, I appreciate the time and effort that you put forward in assembling this and board your work to honor it. I recommend approval as presented, Mr. Chair.
Can the Chair have that motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you. Item number 28 is Personnel. I defer to the board whether there's a need for executive session.
Mr. Cole?
We're good, sir. Thank you. I'll give you a moment to refer to the personnel sheet dated 2/11/21. Resignation, Amanda Deal, effective date 2/4/21. Make that recommendation, Mr. Chair.
Can the Chair have that motion?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Okay, the next recommendations, and this is pending completion of paperwork, background check, and certification for each of these as applicable. The first one is for the Transportation Department. It is Edward Roy Shade, effective date 2/12/21. Make that recommendation, Mr. Chair.
I'll make that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Okay, thank you. The next two recommendations are paraprofessional. Both are effective 2/16/21. Sarah, Ally Reynolds, and Catherine Nguyen. Make those recommendations together, Mr. Chair.
Can the Chair have that motion?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Okay, the next recommendation is for a paraprofessional, pulled separate for Mr. Galloway. This is kinship, so you'll abstain. Paraprofessional, effective date 2/16/21, Amanda Galloway. Make that recommendation, Mr. Vice Chair.
Can we have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion?
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor?
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, our colleague, Mr. Dewis, asked me to specifically convey his full support of that hire, and he would like for that to be reflected in the minutes if it's possible to do so.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Back to Mr. Chair. Transfers. We have Jillian Breeden from paraprofessional to secretary SIS, and the effective date on that is 3/1/21. Make that recommendation, Mr. Chair.
Can the Chair have that motion?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Okay, thank you. The next transfer is Martha Williams from administrator to administrator. Make that effective date 6/1/21. Make that recommendation, Mr. Chair. More to follow on that.
I'd like to make that motion, so.
I'd like to second.
All in favor?
All right, thank you. And that concludes Personnel, and that takes us to comments. So first, I'd like to say, Mr. Chair and Board, I'd like to thank everyone for your presentations this evening. Great job to each of you. I'd like to congratulate everyone who was hired tonight, especially our next Director of School Nutrition, Ms. Martha Williams. She has some big shoes to fill, but I know that she's going to be an outstanding director. Board, congratulations to you for an outstanding groundbreaking, and I also want to thank Mr. Danner and Bowen and Watson, our construction manager, for pulling that together. It was, it was a great event last Thursday. I want to give a huge shout-out to our student athletes. Again, congratulations to our football team recognized tonight, but also our state championship wrestling team, and I look forward to them next month. Don't forget about earlier successes with cross-country volleyball, went to the playoffs, girls' basketball. Aren't they currently undefeated in our region, is my understanding? It's amazing. And I want to give a special shout-out, you know, I alluded to this a little bit earlier, but it's, it's important to, to all of those in technology and also those behind the camera who make Rebel TV, including Mr. Mathis back here, who make that possible. A lot of folks are not getting out because of COVID, especially for indoor events, and Rebel TV really helps out and keeps the people engaged with that, and, and we really appreciate that. One last shout-out up here. He always makes us look and sound really good, and we appreciate Mr. Eldon Moats. And Mr. Moats, how old is this facility, we're pushing, what, two decades in this building?
2005, not, 2004.
Okay. All right, so just a little less than 20 years, and it still looks and functions great. It's great oversight. You take great care of this building and the tons of logistics with all of the programs that go on in here between music and art and drama. Everything that happens in this building, you, you just, you truly do a great job. And the upkeep, and we've got some, some new lighting in here to show off. I want to give a shout-out to Mr. Danner for working with Mr. Moats to make that happen. Give us a quick look at that, Mr. Moats. Put him on the spot here. Mr. Danner, tell us about this new lighting that we're seeing here.
Well, I would like to go to the place back to the first, first phase of meeting that's going to be done here. We'll revert this to LEDs over the next several months and years to get it more into division so we can have that frequency before the board and the person.
All right, thank you so much, Mr. Danner. Thank you, Mr. Moats. We'll go ahead and bring the house lights back up, and that concludes my comments, sir.
Who won't start over? Anybody want to volunteer?
I'll go.
Go ahead.
It's an honor to serve. It's an honor to be a part of this system, part of this team. We celebrate so many successes here, but for me, the ultimate success is, is the success of our students, and that includes our student athletes. It's amazing when we're winning state competitions, we're winning national competitions from right here in Fannin County, and, and I take great pride and pleasure in our students' success. Thank you all for the outstanding work that you do. Mr. Bobby?
I got a bunch. I'll be early. Anyhow, I'd like to thank the coach for bringing the football players and the other coaches in and for what he had to say. You know, he's a hometown boy, and I'm glad of that. Congratulations to the football team and the wrestling team for their position. I'd like to congratulate the students on reach. Thank Mr. Knuckles and his school, the middle school, for their veterans today. And I can't say enough about you, Mr. Knuckles. The only thing I can say as a school, we ain't losing you, but we know where you're going, and we wish you the best. Mr. Danner, 21,291. You know, that's incredible for safety, but I like the fact, you know, wherever key the name goes to that key. That's more safety to me than just being able to open my door. Anyhow. Ms. Finley, great presentation. Mr. Spurling, great presentation. Like I said, I only wished we'd started a lot earlier on that, but since we're going to change all these lights over to LED, that's going to push that number on up. Mr. Enslie, thank you for what you do for the board, and we certainly appreciate you. And I, as like Mr. Bramley, I'm blessed to be on this board. Thankful. Thank everybody for being here and watching on TV today. Thank you.
Mr. Cole?
Well, I am excited to be here. You know, it's, this is an awesome system. We are in an awesome place, and we can get distracted by... There's been a lot of people leave this place through this plague, and I'm sorry for that, but we've been blessed. I look at the time when I came on this board, and we were shouting over 400,000 a month for SPOS, and through a plague, a pandemic, we almost doubled that. The school system is blessed, and the sort of hit on our public speaker comment about building and, you don't know how bad I want to build. And I know the heart of these men that I work with, how bad we want to build, and we are confined at the moment. But I sat with Superintendent this week, and we talked about vision, imagination. I, I have, I have an imagination of some great things, a great facility, just like what he's talking about, probably even greater. And that excites me because we have been blessed with all the sports. We've been blessed academically. I got a, I have a, a daughter in the fifth grade came in today telling me, I made 98, and I believe, I believe she said geometry. I'm like, in the fifth grade? And so that, that excites me. For all the teachers that are out there listening, I had the opportunity yesterday to speak with Tommy Cole, and Mophie on know him. He was my automotive teacher. So I was in 10th, 11th, 12th grade, two hours a day. I had to throw two hours of those away because only four of those counted while I was in high school. And I talked to him about things that he did for me and how he had a grocery cart and taught me how to do front-end alignment, and he would actually bend the wheel and show you how it works. And he said, you know what? I didn't even remember that. I said, do you know how many times I have taught that class in my 30-plus years that I've taught that to guys that couldn't do ASC tests, but I did that? And I said, you're the reason I am where I am, because you cared enough to teach me. And on the other hand, I had Ms. Nichols in 10th grade tell me that that's the worst book report she ever read in her life. That it pushed me while I was in the Marine Corps, the University of South Carolina, that I passed English.
Yeah.
At the college level. That I said, I'm never going to have a teacher tell me that's the worst thing. So teachers, I applaud you for what you do, because I look back over my life and reminisce, and you don't really understand what you're doing. It's down the road, but I am honored to work with each and every one of you. And I had the privilege to read and to read some of what your imagination was about one year, three years, five years down the road. And that excites me because, can I tell you, I've got a plan. I've got a vision. I think we're all moving that way, and if we can all get focused in, as I shared with Dr. Guatney, if you read about the Tower Bible, the word says that they could do whatever they imagined so he confused their language. If we could get our minds to hook up, if we could get going, focused to get there, this great county that we live in, it's just super amazing. this great county that we live in, it's just super amazing what could happen. So I thank you leadership, every one of you that lead every day. I thank you for your leadership, because I watch, and I learn, and I grow from you, because I want to be a better leader, just like we want these kids to be the very best that they can be. So I love those kids, I love what I do, I love these men, and I love you. Have a blessed night.
Let me just say thank you for everyone that showed up and that's watching. It's already been said tonight that it is a pleasure to serve on this board, and that is definitely, I mean, it's an understatement, it is absolutely just an honor, I don't know how else to say it. Let me say also congratulations to our football players and coaches. Coach Cheatham, wow, be blessed to have him leading our guys out, that's amazing. Wish I'd have had him, he's incredible. Wrestling team, congratulations, awesome coaching there also. It's the same, same bunch of guys, so it's no surprise how, how their success is. Want to say thank you, Mr. Knuckles, as it's always a pleasure when you present, I truly enjoy it. Ms. Finley, I enjoyed yours tonight. Thank you for the time refrained. I understand it's hard sometimes. In saying that, I'll say this, a lot of times we sit up here and we thank all of you directors and stuff for all the hard work, and we are very appreciative of it, but I want to say a special thanks to Dr. Guatney. A lot of times me and him have some hard phone calls that's between the two of us or whatever things that come up that we have to discuss in order to put this meeting on, and he goes above and beyond. I thank you for making it as quick and as, as well as what you've done. The amount of information that we, we shove into this one meeting is amazing, and I appreciate you for all your work and efforts and that. I know you don't get the credit for it all the time, but I wanted to at least reach out tonight and say thank you for all that you do, and especially you, Mr. Spurling. I wanted to say thank you. I know that you just barely did scratch the surface on all that you do far as the energy savings. It's a huge job, and for you to be able to save that, that kind of money, I hope the system realizes and knows the amount of time and effort you put into it, because I sure do. I sure recognize it, and I think it is an incredible thing that you're doing. I encourage you to carry on, and I'll charge you to find us other ways. I know you're smart and that kind of stuff, and you're always looking, but come up with it, bring it before us, and we'll be, I'll be honored to bring it, and bring a motion for it. So with that, I'll say thank you, and I'm done. Entertaining motion adjourned. So moved. Second.
All in favor? Thank you once again.
Thank you.
Mike?